Commissioner's courtroom, County Administration Building 206 Texas Avenue Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the indication pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. Commissioner Barrett will lead those.
Please bear your head with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for our many abundant blessings and this beautiful day. Please guide us as we do the business of Brazos County. Look over those of us who serve and to make decisions that are pleasing to you. Please also look after our men and women in the armed services and those who keep us free and our local police and fire and EMS and sheriff's departments. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and our concerns, and I think we've got a few that want to speak this morning. Selena Vasquez. There you are. Okay.
Good morning, County Commissioner and County Judge and our fellow Brazos County residents. My name is Selena Vasquez. I am here this morning as a mother, an educator in our local community, and a concerned community activist. I am here because there have been some local media reports regarding closures of our voting centers. So we just wanted to make sure that someone was here and was a voice for our precinct four residents to ensure and let y'all know the county judge and the county commissioners that we oppose those efforts. Based on local media reports that GW Williams Tabernacle, Castle Heights Baptist Church, Precinct Four Volunteer Fire Station, and Bryan Ballroom would be closed, we would just like to know that go on record again as opposing this and let y'all know that this would disenfranchise our Latino, our African-American community, our working-class community. And if these media reports are accurate, to ask y'all to consider public input or maybe some town halls, some public forums to ask for input for the residents of Precinct Four. In addition, we would also like to mention that if this was due to low voter turnout, we do have some graphs and charts to let you know that based on the last election almost two weeks ago on November 6th, Precinct Four voter turnout increased by from 1,892 votes to close to 4,500 votes. So in terms of increase, we have increased it more than 100%. So if the voter turnout is the issue that, you know, is cause for concern for some of the proposed closures, we would like to let y'all know for the record that increased voter turnout did occur two weeks ago. So again, we're just here based on some local media reports to make sure that y'all knew that we oppose those voting closure centers specifically in Precinct Four. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As you know, we can't respond to citizens.
Could I get a clarification? Could I get a clarification of some information? Just a minute. Yeah. The, okay, so the 1,892, that was which election?
A gubernatorial election in 2014, four years ago.
2014, okay. And the 2018 was, what was that number? I didn't get that recorded.
Yes, let me make sure I have that. I have it right here, sorry. It's a, it was an 87% increase.
Okay, and that number was?
Yes, I'm sorry. 1,892 to 4,398 on two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Karen Hall.
Judge Peters, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I would like to talk about the issue of the voting machines. I really, really, really want to get a paper ballot, and I'm trying to figure out how to convince you all to come along board with me. I do have right now an open records request for the costs between the two that you're looking at, the Hart and the ESNS. But I just submitted it yesterday, so it'll take some time. I think a majority of people agree with me, but there's actually only one way to find out, and that's to start walking. Every time I do, I lose weight. I weighed on the scale, so it's time to start walking again. I would be willing to go and get input from people from each precinct, not your large ones. I'm talking about all the small ones in Brazos County. And since I spent 30 years in research, it's not a matter of saying this one yes or no. You would take a clipboard that would present the Hart one, pros and cons, the ESNS, pros and cons, let people sign whichever one. I'd be willing to do the wording, let you all look at the wording, make sure that it's kind of balanced in terms of what would be presented. What, if you've, now, if you've all made up your mind, don't make me do this, but if you are still looking for input, I'm volunteering, and so I would be asking you for a little bit more time. I think the big election we've got is in two years, so I think we could spend a month or two getting more input. That's my proposition, just asking for more time. And again, I always want to thank you for having here citizens at the beginning and at the end of your meeting, because as people sit here, sometimes you hear something. In the city of Bryan, they only meet once a month. You have to wait an entire month to get to them to comment on something. So that is just one of the best things you have going, and thank you all for supporting it. It's been here for years. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. And Jody Quimby, there you are.
Yeah, I too appreciate very much our opportunity to come and sound off, and I wish more people would, because you would get more direct feedback that way. So I'm here again to talk about voting equipment. I was here visiting with you some weeks ago about this, but I have a little bit of an update. I wanted to make sure you knew. But to remind you, I'm certainly for the ESS system that's electronic and provides a paper copy of the ballot. And just for folks that may not know, the paper copy of the ballot is only used, supposed to be used, for a recount. The electronic system that ESS has will work very similar to what we have now. So the paper ballot's used for a recount, and I think that's really important because I believe it will increase voter confidence and hopefully voter turnout. So not only that, you can't hack a piece of paper. We know that. And that's really the reason behind a lot of this. And I wanted to spend the rest of my time speaking about the Election Security Act that's in Congress, pushed, led by Senator Langford from Oklahoma, I believe. So you may be aware of this, but let me read just two portions out of that for you. And again, this is Senate Bill 2261, and it is named the Secure Elections Act. From page 20, it says, "Paper ballots and statistical audits. The guidelines developed under section, subsection B shall include provisions regarding paper ballots and statistical audits for federal elections, including that each vote is made by paper ballot marked by hand or device, and the voter has an opportunity to inspect and confirm the marked paper ballot before casting it, consistent with accessibility accommodations, and each election result is determined by tabulating marked paper ballots by hand or device and prior to certification by a state of the election result. Election agencies within the state inspect by hand and not by device a random sample of the marked paper ballots and thereby establish high statistical confidence in the election result." One other section from page 30, it says, the title of this section is prohibition on use for certain voting systems. And I'll explain this in just a second. Funds received under a grant under this section may not be used for any voting system that records each vote in electronic storage unless the system is an optical scanner that reads paper ballots. Now, we in Brazos County are not the only ones concerned about this. This is a Senate bill that's been discussed all last year. They tried to bring it to committee vote in August, but there were concerns about federal overreach, and I'm glad there was concerns, okay? But the business of concern about providing a paper trail for elections is a super-duper serious issue. And not to make light of it, but it's more than just a purchase. And I urge you to spend as much time as necessary to figure out what you think is best, because you represent us. But I really want you to buy the ESS system. And not only the Secure Elections Act, but I've discovered that Homeland Security has been put in charge, not in charge, I guess an overseer, I don't know the proper term, but an overseer of elections, at least on the federal level. I don't know how that extends to the state level, but if we have an election, we elect federal people too. And they could very well issue a directive to use or to have a paper ballot backup. I think it would be a tragedy for us to buy an all-electronic system and wind up having to reinvent the wheel if this paper ballot requirement does come about. So please take that into consideration. And one other thing, she mentioned time. I understand that the delivery on equipment is certainly less than six months and could very well be as short as three to four months after you confirm a purchase order. So sometimes when issues come up in the public domain, they have a real short fuse, and I hope that does not happen here. So I realize there's probably a need to have a local election before we have the next presidential election, and that's part of the urgency, I understand. So I can certainly agree with that, but please don't let this be a matter that is rushed. And I know you don't want to do that, but don't feel rushed because of a delivery issue. And so please, please buy the ESS system. I think that's best for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe, is there any other public that would like to speak? Okay, we're going to consider and take action on agenda items 3 through 24. Proclamation 18-045, recognizing and supporting veterans, service members, caregivers.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number four is approval to issue a county diner's club credit card to Nathan Dennis, Sheriff's Investigator with a credit limit of $1,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five is acceptance of donated property for unclaimed clothing, miscellaneous property left by inmates leaving Brazos County Jail.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is approval to remove capital asset number A001000960, a SCAG zero turn warrant from the sheriff's office jail capital asset.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is permission to advertise a bid for an auction for surplus property.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight is authorization for the county judge and emergency management coordinator to sign the participating agency subcontractor agreement for FY '18 through FY '22, July 1st, 2017 through June 30, 2022, for capital area trauma regional advisory council.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is contract with Texas Voting Systems for election services for the city of College Station runoff election, December 11, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10 is agreement with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Company.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 11 is service contract OTP 19-606 with Texas Communications for Parkway Terrace antenna removal in the amount of $3,047.50.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 12, contract CIP 19581 with Spectrum Corporation for Brazos County Center Message Mark A. Sign.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is award bid 19-090, crack seal recommended to Champion Infrastructure LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is award bid 19-094, road signs or signposts recommended. Award is Vulcan Inc., DBA Vulcan Science.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of field agreement between Texas Wildlife Services Program, TWSP, and Brazos County for rodent and pest removal from Site 6 down. Structure and payment costs associated with this service sites located off White Switch in Precinct 1.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 16 is consider and take action on Wellburn Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct two road boards and install 3,500-foot of three-inch.
3,600.
I beg your pardon?
3,600.
Thirty, you're right, 3,600 feet of three-inch water line in the right-of-way of Henderson Road. Line will be crossing under Buchanan Street and Clay Street. Sites located Precinct 1.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 17 is consider and take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct road boards for two one-inch water line crossings and one two-inch water line crossing under Hudson Road. Sites located Precinct 2.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18, expenditure journal FY '18/19, 10033 through 10043.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 19 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval. A through G.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A through G, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 20 is budget amendment, budget amendments for FY '18/19, 8.1 through 8.12, and budget amendments FY '17/18, 58.1 through 58.3.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 21 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 22 is payment of claims claimed to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8009733 through claim number 8009930.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. We will skip down to number 25 and acknowledge monthly reports submitted in October. And then number 26 is sheriff's report on inmate population, sheriff.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our peak in the last 24 hours is 6:51, 545 males, 106 females. We have 53 with electronic monitor and 15 pending.
Okay.
I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to y'all too. Be safe. Number 27 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. Number 28 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will move back up to number 23 and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. Is that one of the ones we needed to vote on?
Do you need to make a statement?
Think we need, is it a unanimous vote to?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Court needs to find that there would be a potential detrimental effect to the negotiations of this contract if the meetings fail without note instead of executive session.
Okay, so I need a motion to that effect.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. There's no opposition. And in that meeting, we need Charles, Caitlin with Charles's office, Bryce, Legal, Mary, and Trudy, and Budget. And of course, Karen, no, I guess Candy should, but Candy's not here, so you'll take notes. All right, in the Commissioners' Court. All right, and the time is 10:24. All right, and the time is ten twenty-four.
You know what, everybody's left. You know what, Barb? It may be okay because everybody's walked out, so I think it's.
What we need?
We were trying to get the music playing so that we won't be overheard in here, so.
Everybody's left.
Yeah, they're all, they're happy.
I don't want to, but I guess I need to.
It looks like everybody.
So actually, you got Bryce?
For now, just the computer.
Bryce, obviously, don't worry about it.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
You too.
Uh, I think. Okay. Bryce?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, me here. Oh. Because they're both on the, uh. Right, yeah. Yeah, although not necessarily that was. I would actually want to, I mean, thank you. Okay.
Okay, we've come back out of executive session. It's ten fifty-seven. Next item is number twenty-nine to adjourn.
So, the source of this data in...
What if...